Before we get going?
Yes, sir. Before we get going, we're gonna throw it to you. You got something you want to say, right?
Somebody turned old today on the board, so I think, uh, I think the Summers has got something for him before we get started. I think it might be sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
We used to think that was old, and the older we get, that's not nearly as old. So that's, uh, so Kerry said payback. We gotta sing Happy Birthday.
Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, God bless you. Happy Birthday to you.
Thank y'all very much. Oh, yeah.
All right. Uh, here we go. All right. Real quick, uh, like I said, I just want to thank everybody for coming to the, uh, two thousand eighteen, twenty, November twenty-seventh Board meeting. At the end of the meeting, uh, we have a time set aside for anyone in the audience who would like to, uh, uh, come before the board. Uh, just make sure you please fill out the form. Uh, it's located behind Mr., uh, Mr. Joe Paul and Mr. Whitfield right over to, to my left, if you're all right. Uh, now, just remember you're allowed three minutes. Um, that's an individual five minutes if you're representing a group or a business. Um, and just remember, if anybody comes before the board, please make sure you state your name and who you represent and your address for the record, please. At this time, we'll move on down to the consent agenda. Um, this is where one vote cover, covers, uh, uh, multiple items in the consent agenda. Uh, at this time, is there anyone in the audience with any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Anyone in the audience? All right, man, none of it. Is there, uh, anyone on staff with any questions or concern? Anyone on staff? All right, man, I'm in the board notes. I mean, cur, uh, questions or concerns with the consent agenda? In the board notes? If not, I entertain a motion that we accept the, uh, consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All right, got motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? And any wanting the public on this? All right, in your opposition to the motion? Motion passes. Five, no, that we accept the consent agenda. All right? County staff business. Sam?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I know we're on a tight schedule this morning. Just got two quick things. We need to go out for RFPs, uh, for contracting to harvest our sand in Honeyville. Uh, we don't want to get in the sand harvesting business, but we need to say it desperately. So, uh, wanna go out for proposals that if you will call a special meeting, the, the attorneys got your RFP, uh, for garbage, uh, that's tentatively slated for, to be opened on January the eighth at ten o'clock on Tuesday. So if y'all call a special meeting for that day, we'll have these bids in for the same day.
Okay.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrum. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? All right? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
If I could skip down to number ten, we have several folks from the Water Management District today, and if Brett wants to introduce those folks, and, uh, and then the county attorney has a, a proposed emergency ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Two breaths.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Brett Cypress. I'm the executive director of the Northwest Florida Water Management Districts. Uh, just want to let you know that we're here to help you in Gulf County. We've had a, a great working relationship with your staff, the other Brett, uh, as well as your, uh, your county administrator. So anything that we can do to help you in this process, we're here for. Any direct questions related to, uh, our mapping process as it relates to flooding? Um, I've got staff here, John Crowe on the left, Jared Sack, you're all in the middle. Uh, they're the guys that do this mapping for a living, but I think y'all have a, a way for we support your direction, um, as discussed with, uh, Mr. Hammond. So, uh, anything you can do to help you, please don't hesitate.
All right, thanks, sir. Any questions, both members?
And, and where we are, or while we're here, uh, a couple of months ago, I guess, uh, October, I guess, in our, uh, October special meeting, we discussed going forward, moving forward on the north end of the county with a mass loma, which would help those folks in doing some more study around the coast. And then, of course, we had a visit by Michael that, uh, kind of upset out the cart. So different communities are handling it differently, and some communities, which we were not willing to do, are holding off on any building permits for an indefinite period of time until FEMA puts out some preliminary maps. That was not even a possibility for us. So we've been meeting with Water Management and, uh, and their contract engineers for several weeks now to come up with a, with a solution where we can look forward, where take the folks that want to rebuild immediately and, and still not hurt people too bad. So what we've come up with is, and it, it, the only thing I'm asking you this morning in addition to adopting the emergency ordinance is, do you want to go one foot above base flood or two feet above base flood for the preliminary maps? And again, this is, this is mainly affect coastal areas. We've been in negotiations and discussions in the city, which ain't go to do exactly what we are gonna do. They haven't made a decision yet, so we're gonna have the opportunity to follow your lead or do something else, but, but that's basically where we're at, uh, where, where we don't have a situation where you can, can build a house, uh, under the current maps, knowing that preliminary maps are gonna change, the, when, you know, the, the final maps are gonna change, and then you would be below base flood. And, and either if you have a mortgage, you would be required to have insurance, it would be extremely expensive, or you'd be susceptible to flooding, or if you paid cash, you couldn't sell it without somebody being well below base flood and have, you know, astronomical flood rates. So that's what we're trying to do, and, uh, the technical folks are here. If you got any questions for them, then we just want to know if you want, the, the safe mode would be to go two feet above base flood, and then when they adopt them later, if you want to back off a foot, we've been a foot above base flood for twenty-two or twenty-three years. Uh, you get a discount, you'll get a bigger discount if you go to two feet. It does present a cost for folks that have to go up a foot. Now, again, if you've got to go up five or six feet, most folks are gonna go up eight and park underneath. If you've got to go up two feet, that extra foot costs a lot more. So that's basically where we're at, and if y'all got anything to add.
I think, uh, I think in addition to that, I think that's a pretty prudent course of action, uh, for the, for the short term and, and medium term. We do, I mean, we, we will finish work on, uh, the mapping as it stands now, and there'll be, uh, uh, additional, we'll have a, a map that'll just show the event. You'll be able to see what happened with, with Michael, not that one would necessarily want to build to, to that level, to probably one or five hundred year storm we're talking about. Uh, but I think the course of action taken is prudent. You can always go back later on on individual spots and say, this does not, this does not fit with us, or you as a group, as a county, can also make the decision to, to amend those maps based on, or look at those, uh, those map amendments based on actual realities later on, uh, with that work. I think, uh, I think, uh, y'all have expressed an, an interest in getting on with rebuilding your lives and rebuilding your communities. I think this is a, a prudent way to do it.
All right. Board, board, you got any questions?
I think Ms. Colberg wants.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you remember, uh, on the base flood, you cannot go below that one foot. The Florida Building Code has adopted in, in the new code that, in the last code cycle, that one foot above base flood is mandatory regardless.
Okay.
Just to recap, before the, the county attorney gives you this emergency ordinance for the public's verification, this is adopting the preliminary maps that have been out for a while, okay? They may change. Uh, we don't think they're gonna change more than the two feet above base flood. That's why we're saying it's proven to go to that. Uh, there would be an opportunity to back off if they did, when they do more study on individual lots, but we don't think there's gonna be that much change in the, in those maps when they come out from the preliminary. Again, and this would be, it wouldn't affect insurance rates today. It's only for people that need to get a building permit, and they want to get one in the next six months before these maps come out.
Okay.
That's read, digest version.
Michael, so if we, if, if we adopted the two foot above today, we could go back at a later date and read?
You, you, you could go back in two ways. You can go back to one foot above, and you could go back to just say that, that, that the maps changed some in, in a, right, negative, in a, in a, in a, a lower elevation way you could go to that, too.
Okay. Okay.
I got, I got one question. Well, um, if we went one foot above and get the property owner the option to do what they wanted to on, on, excuse me, on their, um, personal situation, um, doesn't that seem like more sense? You know, easiest way to go back, go, let the property owner decide and bear the burden and expense?
Yes and no. The, 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 the problem is that it's always gonna be your fault in the end if they wind up having to have flood insurance, and it costs them five thousand dollars a year because you didn't make them build higher. Uh, but, but it's certainly fine with me if you want to, to do that.
Let me pose this question, Michael. If you do the one foot above, people's always gonna come back. They're, they're gonna push the limit, and then if the maps change and go above that, so it's gonna be our fault.
Because, and, and, and always, and again, back from my building department days, home to castle, you want to build the way you want to do it, everybody, you know, gonna live there forever, and then they get a divorce and have to sell it, or they die and have to sell it, and their kids can't sell it, can't get insurance, can't do all these things. So that's the, that's what we're trying to, to avoid. I, I'm not trying to lobby you either way. I just err on the side of caution, I'm recommending to, but if y'all want to go with one, the same way it is, that's fine with me as well. My, my guess is that six months or so, we're gonna have the final version preliminarily, and then they'll be advertised and all that kind of stuff. So the, the insurance rate part, where it's gonna benefit folks that are coming out, mainly in the north end of the county, they're gonna try to do that with mass loma, but this probably is still gonna be a, a year or eighteen month process before it all fleshes out. What, what we don't want is somebody come in and build below base flood, and then it change, which it's gonna change, and then them get caught, they can't sell it, or, or have astronomically higher insurance, or they get flooded again.
Most people I've talked to, if, if we, when me and Lee met with some yesterday, if we tell them, you've got to go three foot above, you know, above your, your base flood, uh, that's, no, I'm gonna go five foot. Most people at this point are saying, we're not gonna push it, you know?
But what, what I've looked at the map, which can be good or bad, I think, one, I, I love the idea about having the actual data, and even though I've argued a little bit with the, with the actual data, based, based on the map, but from, from actually seeing it in person, the, the maps that are gonna come out are not gonna be as bad as what the flood was. You, you know, there was water six to eight feet in people's houses, I mean, along, along that avenue. They're not that bad. The maps are not gonna be that bad, because just like he said, we pray that never in our lifetime, or in two or three generations' lifetimes, this happens again. I mean, this is a five hundred year storm. They're not gonna make you build a five hundred year storm, but we know, because we lived it, where the water was. So these, these maps that are gonna come out, when they change, even though they are gonna get worse in a sense that, that people are gonna have to build up, they're not gonna have to build up as high as what the water came. They gonna build to a average hundred year storm, I guess, is what they, they, they're thinking.
That's how it works, and even though we'll have those maps, I think the end of next month, we'll have, uh, a map that shows you where the water got to and, uh, here on the coast. So you have a chance to make a decision. You, you make a decision separately in terms of how you approach, uh, your base flood elevation and free board above it. The other decision is on the part of the builder or homeowner that says, do I build to a five hundred year storm, or do I build what, you know, maybe more, you know, reasonable, which is that, that one or two feet above the, the free board and base flood elevation? But, uh, Mr. Hammond is correct, the, the final maps will not look like, will not, are not drawn to a five hundred year storm.
Okay.
And Michael answers this again, so everybody knows, if, if we do the two foot above today, we can't come back at a later date if the maps are not as bad, so.
And, and, and what, either way, just so you'll, you'll know that you're going, with the final maps come out, you're gonna adopt them, I mean, whether it's a year from now or eighteen months from now, and you'll have the opportunity to, to, to lower that down or go up. I mean, some communities go three feet above. I mean, it just, I'm not recommending that, but, but we just kind of split the, the baby, and, and with the two as a recommendation, I'm good either way. But I do think we need to make this, this implementation, because we don't need to slow down people that want to build.
Right, right. All right? Any more questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Snowman?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, what you're receiving right now is the, um, proposed emergency ordinance. Um, I want you all to have a copy of it, um, just so I can, before we open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, for the emergency ordinance. I just wanted to cite Statute one twenty-five, uh, subsection sixty-six, paragraph three. Um, and I'm gonna read it into the record so that we have that, um, as part of today's public record. It talks, it speaks, "The emergency enactment procedure shall be as follows. Board of County Commissioners, any regular or special meeting may enact or amend any ordinance with a waiver of the notice requirements by a four-fifths vote of the membership of such board declaring an emergency exists and the immediate enactment of said ordinance is necessary." Before we go forward, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that the commission entertain a motion, um, establishing, uh, both the waiver of the notice requirements that we typically would follow under statute, as well as the immediacy and the emergency that exist for the consideration of this ordinance.
All right, thanks, sir. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner McCrum.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Uh, anyone in the public on us waiting in this? Uh, any opposition to? All right, come on up, Dr. Hart.
Pat Hartman, Coastal Community Association President. Um, I just would recommend that if we take a minute, we look at the possibility of just going up to one foot, um, because that's, that's more standard.
Dr. Hartman, just one second. I, I just, because what we need, what we, yeah, what we need to do is we need to establish the emergency and the waiver notice, and then, and then get in into the actual content of the elevations, if you would. Okay? Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am?
All right. Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, with that behind you, following state statute, I would do want us to say for the public record that, um, with the administration's recommendation before the Thanksgiving holiday, we went ahead and posted notices, um, so there's constructive notice on the county courthouse, on the county website, as well as any administration building, um, so that this notice was out, uh, more than a week ago with regards to consideration of this and also put into your agenda packet. As I stated under the statute, the purpose of an emergency ordinance is typically you will have, uh, ample time to advertise it, um, and you've heard Mr. Hammond today express that what we're doing today is considering an emergency temporary ordinance for the preliminary flood maps and the free board base elevation plus a certain amount of feet above that. And then the intent, it's stated in this ordinance, I'm gonna read some relevant sections, is to come back to it after we've publicly advertised and consider it through public advertisement, additional public hearings, but the immediacy and the emergency that exists right now for folks that want to get back and build through the holidays with the building department necessitates an, an emergency ordinance. But it's the intent that's expressed in here that will come back in the next sixty to ninety days, have a more permanent public advertisement, go through the normal process of adopting an ordinance. And then in addition to that, later on, when the final maps come out, we can then have subsequent, uh, public hearings, we would adopt the final flood maps as well, okay? Without reading the whole content, I'm just gonna hit to high points unless there's any objection from the Commissioners. Okay? I'm gonna read it. "It's an emergency ordinance of Gulf County adopting preliminary federal emergency management agency FEMA base flood elevations for the issuance of construction and building permits with additional minimum elevation requirements. Free board pending further ratification and latter final adoption directing county administration, building and planning departments to develop proposed land development regulations and enforcement consistent with the preliminary FEMA flood plan and base flood elevations, providing for repealer severability modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearing, and providing for codification effective date." If, Commissioners, if you can, the first two pages, the, uh, relevant sections are "Board of County Commissioners pursuant to Florida Statute one twenty-five may adopt through an emergency enactment procedure a regular meeting any ordinance wherein the commission has declared an emergency exists and the immediate enactment of said ordinance is necessary. The commission finds and determines that following the recent devastation and level destruction existing structures throughout the county and from the effects of Hurricane Michael Storm event, that such an emergency exists and immediacy of its adoption is necessary. Whereas Florida Statute one twenty-five shall provide the county the power to carry out any county, county government inclusive of the power to adopt its own rules, which are not inconsistent with general or special laws or designed to promote the public health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. The commission, after several years of careful review, public hearings, and consideration of various state and federal administrative and regulatory recommendations for the adoption of the preliminary FEMA flood maps and code companion model flood plan management ordinance are necessary and appropriate for Gulf County to adopt. The commission has received recommendations of county staff and state and federal regulatory authorities in determining the flood resistant construction requirements and elevated minimum height requirements to the Florida Building Code and the preliminary code companion flood plan management maps with the heightened elevation for Gulf County flood hazard areas that are most beneficial and serve the public interest, the public safety for continuing building and construction pending further deliberations and future consideration of the, of the adoption of a final companion model flood plan management ordinance. And whereas FEMA has identified special flood hazard areas within the boundaries of Gulf County, such areas may be subject to periodic inundation, which may result in loss of life, property, health, and safety hazards, disruption of commerce and governmental services, extraordinary public expenditures for flood protection and relief, and the impairment of the tax base, all which adversely affect public health, safety, and general welfare." Florida Statute five fifty-three was adopted by the Florida Legislature with a provided mechanism for the uniform adoption updating an amendment, interpretation, enforcement of state building code called the Florida Building Code. The commission has determined that it is the public interest to adopt the preliminary flood plan management regulation and maps for the heightened elevations that is limited in scope, and the application shall be coordinated through the Florida Building Code. Uh, Commissioners, on your third page, under section three, there's a purpose and intent and scope. There's eight criteria that are the intent and purpose behind adopting this emergency ordinance. There are what Mr. Hammond has spoken to, what Brett provided to you as well, and also your public hearings over the last two years that you've heard, and the consideration of these flood maps. Those eight, eight criteria there are your purpose and your intent. Below it, under section four, is your height elevation requirement policy and application. That is the actual substance or the material changes that you're gonna adopt under consideration today. This will be fleshed out in additional future ordinances, but what I'd like to do is read at least that paragraph so that it's on the record and that you understand what you're considering today. And the, the commission, after public comment, can consider what elevations. It's Gulf County hereby adopts mandatory minimum requirement that all future building permits and structures within the designated FEMA flood plan management flood hazard areas shall hereafter have the lowest floors elevated to or above the preliminary base flood elevation plus X amount of feet, and the, and the definition of the, uh, base flood elevation is provided, which is the elevation of the base flood, including wave height relative to the National Geotic Vertical Datum and other datum specified on the flood insurance rate maps. Gulf County Building Department shall adopt the following technical language for application and use in issuing future permits. Minimum elevation requirements shall be as specified in ASC twenty-four or base flood elevations plus X amount of feet, whichever is higher. Gulf County Building Department shall apply this additional elevation in its evaluations, assessments, and determination for the issuance of all construction building permits in the affected and defined flood hazard areas pursuant to the Florida Building Code. Section five, six are codification and penalties consistent with Florida law. There's a severability clause and also codification into your current LDRs, comprehensive plan, and your flood management. Commissioners, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, this is an emergency ordinance to identify that limited requirement that's being recommended by staff and your, uh, state agencies, as well as federal administrative recommendations. This will be, uh, again, advertised at a later date with more, um, comprehensive ordinance addressing, uh, additional definitions and more in flood plan management. But I'd be happy to answer any questions before you open it up to, uh, public hearings, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. Any questions, uh, Commissioners, for Mr. Snowman? All right, man, not, all right. Public comment, comment. Uh, Dr. Hartman, you want to go first?
I think I'm okay this time. Pat Hartman, Gulf, Coastal Community Association. Um, there's a lot of repercussions that occur whenever you make these changes like this, as you're well aware. I just don't want to put people in a position where they can't rebuild as a result of doing this. Uh, that one foot has a lot of cost factors to it, particularly when you have a home already there that you may have major damage to, but you could still reconstruct on your foundation that's there. Uh, I've got one that's in an X right now. When you do this, you'll move them to an AE, and that extra foot will mean they'll have to take the whole map. So it, it does, it's, it's got all kinds, and it's got positive repercussions, too. We know the flood map, maps need to be adopted, and need to, you do some science, as I've said over and over. But I think if you could do it with the one foot, it would be helpful for people, it would give you the leverage. Now, if somebody's already gonna tear down their house, what we've told them through the book for, over a year now, two years, is go to the new preliminary maps to look at your, uh, elevations. This isn't going to hurt many people out on your Cape areas and what have you, because they're already on pilings. But when you go from a, a ground foundation, or not flat on the ground, it's pier type foundation, to where you have to go to pilings, you've added a huge amount of money to the cost of the house. And I just don't want to see us a ghost town down here because people can't go back. So, you know, consideration, I know it needs to be done, I'm not against doing it, I'm just simply saying let's minimize the effect that we have on people. One foot would be sufficient.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. All right? Anyone else in the, uh, public on this? Public comment on this emergency ordinance? Anyone else in the public? All right, there being none, close to the public comment. It's Snowman.
Mr. Chairman, I was limited to three hundred seconds to provide that all to you, so I don't want to exceed that, that criteria, that quota, so. Um, strict instructions.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, if there's any questions of this, uh, commission of the staff, otherwise it is the recommendation of your administration for the adoption of this emergency ordinance, uh, which we will come back, as I indicated, and, and continue to address through public hearings when we have final maps. That's for your consideration, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. So, I may just, uh, so, Mr. Hammond, you recommend the two feet. We just heard from the public, uh, they want to stick with one feet. So if we go up to two feet, you're saying it's gonna cost the whole month more money?
It can, if they're not going higher. Now, that, that is, that is certainly true. Now, the other positive, and I'm not gonna lose sleep if y'all go one, so don't, don't get me wrong, I think it's prudent to go with two, and we can always back off. Number two, I think we get a, is it a five or ten percent discount countywide if we go to this second foot? So, I mean, it's a, it's a huge savings to everyone that has flood insurance. It's not necessarily a huge savings to the one that's got to go up the extra foot. And again, Pat's exactly correct. If you're, if you're gonna build a slab house, a lot of these folks don't need to build back slab houses, but if you're gonna build a slab house and you go up an extra, you know, foot on a slab house, it's extremely expensive. If you go up an extra foot on a piling house, it's not, don't matter much, it's five or eight, you park underneath. That's, so again, the, the, this is, this is gonna mostly affect slab houses, again.
Well, Mike, I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. I guess my question is, take a young couple that's building a house, if, if they start building a house tomorrow, and they adopted, we, we adopted this one foot, and the maps changed to go above that, one foot above, and they went to get insurance for that property, that is gonna impact them tremendously for life, for life on that property.
That's right.
And that's my concern. The houses that, that have to be re, I, I think that the fifty-one percent plays a bigger factor, Lee, am I right in the, 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 the actual elevation on what's gotta be built back? It's, if we do the two foot, it's not gonna tell these people that the fifty-one, if they're damaged to that point, they've gotta build back anyway. That's, they've gotta push it down, so.
And if they're, and if they're under fifty percent, they don't have to meet the new criteria either, even though they'd still be on the hook if they change the flood zone.
But my concern is, down the road, that young couple says, you know, we're gonna build just to that one foot above, and that map changes, and, and the mortgage, um, company says, well, you've got to insure this for this. It puts them in a bind for the, the rest of that, that long. And that's my concern. We can always, we can always back this down, but, but, you know. Any, any, well, I. Lee? Tell me what you and Brett think. Yeah, I mean, y'all, y'all work on this every day, and.
Well, there's, there's a couple of different issues here, and you're exactly right. Any, any home that was damaged that stays under the fifty percent does not have to buy by this whatsoever. They'll be grandfathered in. The ones that are over 50 that are going to have to be either demolished or rebuilt, if they have to meet the new flood anyway, I don't know whether the one foot or two foot is going to make as much a difference as some people are thinking because some of the flood that were in an X zone is going to an AE, they're going to have to be four, five feet off the ground anyway. So I don't know how high, I don't know how much that's going to affect whether it's going to be one foot or two foot, how much it's going to affect whether it's going to be on piers or pilings whatsoever. But understand that if they stay under 50% of the value of the home, then they don't have to buy by it anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I got one question. When we talk about flood insurance, a 5% to 10% savings per individual over a lifetime is a lot of money. Wouldn't that probably be more beneficial to us to do that?
I could make the argument on both sides. We have proposed, when I was building official, seemed like 100 years ago, we proposed, too. Couldn't get three votes. Don tried it in the early 90s, couldn't get three votes. Got a lot of chapping when he started enforcing the flood ordinance until we had the bad floods in 90, 94, 98, and then the ones that built to the high standard were okay for the most part, and the ones didn't argue anymore. This is a little bit different situation, much worse than we've ever seen before. Again, my recommendation's two, it's not going to hurt my feelings at all. I mean, I'm not passionate about it. I just think it's prudent, and we can always back off. It's only going to affect, again, the immediate effect has nothing to do with insurance because the insurance rates won't change until the maps officially change the FEMA. But this is just for folks that want to build back in the next six months to a year to give them a guideline, and we're just trying to speed up the process and be prudent. So I most importantly want you to adopt the ordinance, and then if you do one or two, it's material.
All right. All right, thanks, sir. All right, our board members, we need to make a decision. What's the wishes of the board? I'm kind of leaning towards two, and then we can always back it up, back it back if we need to, but I don't want to put nobody in a bind. Yes, sir. Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a temporary emergency, temporary emergency ordinance, and I'll go ahead and promote motions in order that we adopt it with the two feet. That's my motion.
All right, motion by Mr. McDaniel, that we've moved forward with the emergency ordinance with the recommendation of two feet.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, second by Mr. Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Any further board discussion? All right, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
That's all I've got at this time. We will send this information to the City of Port St. Joe and see if they will adopt the same emergency ordinance where they hold those folks up. That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Novak?
Thank you, Commissioners. Couple of things real quick I want to update you on since we last met earlier in the month. The first is with regards to, actually, I'll bring up a new issue first. I have a petition for the vacation and abandonment of a right-of-way. It's parcel 936010R. As you all recall, a couple of years ago, we adopted a new real comprehensive abandonment policy and application. The purpose of it was twofold. One, to get as much information out to the public when you're considering abandoning a right-of-way or a roadway or an abandoned road. Two, to make the petitioners pay for it so that it wasn't on the county taxpayers' back or the commission. So the new policy accomplishes that. What we've obviously also encountered is, without the commission's consideration and approval, property owners are leery of spending $1,000 to go down that path without having an indication from the commission that they would be willing to consider it. So what we've done as a practice is we've introduced the abandements. This one is from Peggy McLamore. It's 936010R. It is Pete's Road. It is approximately 140 feet, Mr. Chairman, and it is a petition for the vacation of that right-of-way. So you're all familiar, and I know I want to remind you each time we do this, they submit the application, they run the ads, they have public hearings, they come before you all, all their notice to their neighbors, and then they come and present. But we don't go down that path unless we have an indication from the commission that they'd be willing to consider that abandonment for the property owner's protection of spending that kind of money. So if there's any objection or questions of the commission, we certainly, we can entertain that. Otherwise, we can give them an indication to go ahead and advertise that before January for those public hearings. It's a dirt road the county maintains. They live at one end of it, and like I said, I think it's 140 feet potential. Now, you've abandoned alleyways historically in the past, but again, we'll run this ad and charge them the fee through the clerk's office if you all give us the approval to move forward.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, Board member?
For clarification, just for where the property is, it's all for 301, it dead-ends the Billy Gill research pasture. So the mother and the son on both sides of the road, and it was paved up to a point not being further. So we're talking about the end of that road, the dead ends to that pasture.
It's, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's Commissioner Rich. It's down in Honeyville area. Are you familiar with where it is? I know the road very well, and it's a road to nowhere. It's just paved in front of the houses and has a balance of what, 150, 160 feet goes. It doesn't go anywhere, so I don't, it's no benefit to the county. In fact, it would, we have to maintain it, and that would just take it off our, that little short distance off our paving schedule, so I'm not opposed to, you know, I'll go along with it. I say when it comes to a boat to abandon it.
All right. Yeah, we need a motion to, we need a motion to move forward.
Just to move forward. Yes, sir.
Make a motion to move forward, please.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rich. Need a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any further board discussion on this? Bender, advertise for this. All right, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passes on five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of updates, Commissioners, on contracts first. Mr. Hammond indicated to you that you approved a special meeting for early January. The advertisement for the solid waste collection services for the county notices going out to the vendor pursuant to the contract to notify them of the, we're going to follow the procurement policy. The RFP is being finalized and will be advertised. Just because it takes a couple of days, almost a week to get it out after you all decide on it, just so you know that the close date for submission of the bid for public or anybody out there is January 4th. The special meeting date you've indicated and approved already is January 8th, and there will be a mandatory vendor contractor meeting in December prior to the holiday, I believe it's December 18th, at 10:00 a.m. in this room, consistent with your practice in the past. Any questions from vendors will be required prior to that, that mandatory meeting with contractors, but it'll be held in this room. I wanted to get that out there in advance of, obviously, the RFP, those dates have now been solidified by your vote today. The second contract is to update you with regards to your debris removal and your hauler with Ashbrit. At your last meeting, discussed an amendment. You tentatively approved a conditional amendment subject to the DOT's concurrence and review. We've sent that up to them. They've been working through their staff and their general counsel and their district office to get us concurrents so we can have the chairman sign that amendment. It is the additional items that weren't identified in the contract eight years ago. We've now had multiple discussions with their staff and their counsel. What I'd ask for today, based on their recommendations, are a few things in that amendment to the contract. And as you all know, the DOT has assumed the responsibility for the costs and have taken over your contracts for this to remove on hauling, but working through that, they wanted to make sure, based on the DEM's memo that was sent out right after the hurricane, is that they would assume pre-existing contracts and fee schedules that were adopted prior to the storm. Bay County adopted several of those items on the fee schedule in theirs several years ago, and I would ask that you all entertain a vote to mirror Bay County fee schedule rates on that amendment so that the amendment that the Gulf County signs is consistent with what Bay County adopted with Ashbrit so that those numbers are consistent and pre-existing prior to the storm in our contract. That would be the first motion I ask you all to consider.
Thanks, sir. So moved, Mr. Chairman. I got a motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion on this, adopting these fees? Anyone in the public on this, fee schedule adoption? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
The second motion I'd ask for you all to consider and place on the record is additional items that are not in the Bay County, and I'd ask you to provide the administrator authorization to negotiate and to finalize and sign off on items such as vessels, e-waste, and computers, and other items in the fee schedule that are not in the Bay County, but to have the administrator sign off with Ashbrit in that amendment after consulting and looking at comparables in other districts. The DOT has asked us to vet those, work through the administration, and have permission from you all to sign that in our amendment. It is your contract, it is your amendment, but they've taken the responsibility for it. So then their review through their DOT, they want to make sure that you have all gone through that process. So I'd ask you for a motion to authorize the administrator to identify those other items and sign off on.
All right, thanks, sir. I entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Moving from contracts to leases, at your last meeting, you had discussed the Weewaw courthouse. I had an opportunity, I don't know if Ms. Gaskin is here this morning, I know she indicated she wanted to, as you, some of your commissioners are attending a funeral after this, she had that obligation as well. But in speaking with her yesterday, knowing that the issue would come back up, I know, Commissioners, you had addressed it at the last meeting, you had tabled the issue with regards to how to handle the lease and the damages to the courthouse. I had a good conversation with Ms. Gaskin yesterday afternoon. I'd asked if she had board direction with regards to your offer of conveyance of the courthouse to North Florida Child Development. She indicated she has not had the opportunity because they've all been displaced and it's been difficult to get a board meeting together. But I also, she was at your last meeting, if you recall, she stayed afterward, and we had a discussion as to what your concerns were, which is you wanted to look at it, Commissioners on districts one and two, and vet the entire lease and the courthouse. I had a discussion with her. I told her it was going to be coming back up today. I've discussed with the administration, we've reviewed the lease, and I've had discussion with her with regards to the damages to the courthouse. She had indicated she has most, if not all, of her stuff removed and her staff right now. She indicated she's still trying to get with Ms. Malden and try to get a board meeting together and see if there is an ability for them to make a board vote to accept the courthouse. I also indicated to her that it's gotten to the point in the condition that it's untenable under the lease conditions as it currently exists. I drafted up a proposed notice to Ms. Gaskin, but I'd ask you all for further direction on how you wish to proceed on that lease with the damages to the courthouse, and how would you like me to provide North Florida Child Development any further guidance?
All right, thanks, sir. All right, Commissioners? Motion, motion, which?
Chairman, yes, sir, Mr. McDaniel. Thank you. I was the one that asked for a two-week delay. And after studying it and talking it over with the attorney and our staff, and we do not have a signed agreement. Am I correct, Mr. Attorney? The agreement never was signed by North Florida.
Yes, sir, we have, we have an executed lease from 2014. That's correct, sir, we do. It's a 10-year lease for $1 a year, and one of the conditions in that signed lease is that if the property suffered casualty damages or fire that were so significant or extensive that it was untenable, that the county would have the exclusive right to immediately terminate that lease, and listen to them. So that's where we are, we've discussed that provision with Ms. Gaskin as well as to the damage and actually still occupying the building under the lease.
All right. But next question I have, in the lease?
Yes, sir.
Was there provisions in there that have not been met by North Florida? What I'm saying is like, my understanding was, we leased this building for $1 a year. Now, if she ever abandoned it, if North Florida ever abandoned it, then it reverts back to the people of Gulf County.
Yes, sir, it is still Gulf County.
There's situations in there where that, you know, insurance had to be carried, upkeep on the building had to be, the county relieved itself from any of those responsibilities.
Yes, sir. The lease does state that very clearly. It's a very lengthy insurance obligations, and I know that North Florida carried certain certificates that it provided with regards to contents. There's other provisions in there that are very detailed, and I'd have to go back and review it, but there are very specific standards that they needed to meet throughout their occupancy for those 10 years. And we've, obviously, the elevator, the maintenance of the building, there's things that we've been working on with them over the years, what parts of the building they could occupy, what parts they couldn't. So it's been a fluid, ongoing discussion with North Florida, but I think, and in discussing with Ms. Gaskin, she knows that it's not habitable. It's not a fit place after the storm to have, conduct their business, and she's acknowledged that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Okay, all right. Lee, you been to the building, all right?
Yes, sir.
It's in bad shape.
There's a lot of damage. There's parts of the roof missing, water damage, some structural damage that I've seen, mold, waters in the basement, where all the electric's at, that's going to be a big issue.
All right, thanks, sir. Yes, sir?
And I apologize, Mr. McDaniel, the agreement you're referring to that wasn't signed, which is going back six, seven months, if you all recall, I think it was January of this year, you all voted unanimously to give the courthouse to North Florida Child Development. We prepared that agreement, and that was not accepted, and that was not signed. And I apologize, I thought you were referring to the lease several years ago. The agreement that we drew up for the conveyance of that courthouse to that not-for-profit was very specific terms. They needed to vote to accept it. We provided them a proposed deed, and that was in May, and that was never voted on. They turned it down, and they did not accept it. So that is accurate, sir, what you're referring to.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I come back again after this? We've got two issues there. For the people that don't know and been raised there and raised in that old courthouse, I know a lot of the history on it, you've got the original building, and then the jail was added at a later date. Probably 70% of the problem is in the jail area, but that'd be correct. I know that's where the electrical components, that's where the basement is, and that's where most of the mold damage. But to the original building, it's in the, we have pictures, I think Mr. Yeager and I looked at some, it's in the northeast corner, familiar, up towards the library. Part of the roof's missing, and I can't understand why, or that needs to be tarped. And I'm kind of, I don't understand why the tenant didn't try to preserve, you know, make arrangements to tarp that area or make some temporary repairs to it, not only to protect the people's building, but to protect the, all of their, whatever they had in the building. But anyway, we have to abandon the old jail, I understand that, but I hate the, not, just the roof's open there, and it's not that big of a job to fix that roof, to preserve that building. But anyway, I don't know if I wish to, but it's happened, you know, hindsight's 2020. But anyway, I'm through, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other board members? We got, we got a big decision, huh?
Yes, sir. And if you go back, it was the staff's recommendation at your last meeting earlier in the month that you terminate the lease and vacate the tenant for public safety and health issues as well as the unsafe nature of the building at the time. So bringing it a full circle, that's where you are today, and if you can provide us further direction in that regard.
All right. So wishes of the board?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion back to Mr. Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion on this issue? Anyone in the public on this issue? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, just a few other items. I've met with you each individually before and after the holiday, updating on some of the positive traction we've had on some of the litigation you've had against the county over the last several months. Unfortunately, I have another item I need to address with you all and report to you all that I have a new lawsuit that was reported in the news. I have a courtesy copy, it's been filed with regards to your pledge of TDC funds to the use of the city park and the enhancement that the city of Port St. Joe voted to accept and to go through the steps of adopting a plan and the use of your fifth century or TDC tax dollars. The lawsuit is from, I believe, actually, I, actually, I'll just read the caption to you. Have several, see, Christie McElroy, Robert Branch, Cindy Branch, Fred Morris, Claire Morris, Art Rogers, Elaine Rogers, Stephen Hiller, Daniel Doty, Joyce Doty, and John Fadio have filed a complaint. There's four counts. It is against the city of Port St. Joe and the county of Gulf. I'll provide each a courtesy copy of the one that I have here. We'll go through the steps, we'll notify your carrier as we do on your other litigation through your insurance carrier. In essence, what you have is a challenge, there's a common law nuisance claim, there's also a count with regards to the use of the property in the city and the city's use of that property for the park and the expansion of the park and the features there. There's also a count in there challenging the county's use of the There's also a count in there challenging the county's use of the TDC fifth cent for the, for these purposes that we've discussed through your public hearings over the last two years. I've spoken with the city attorney, Mr. Albretton, we will reach out to the plaintiff's counsel and move forward accordingly. Under the Florida statute and the Florida Civil Rules of Procedure, we'll have an opportunity to respond to each of the counts, and then after we engage and notify them, I will meet with each of your commissioners, keep you abreast of how it moves forward. And then also, after we have our initial hearings before the judge, I will keep you updated on where we're at standing with that case. All right, any questions from the commissioners with regards to the litigation?
Any ques, any questions, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Attorney, have you received official notice? Have you been served?
No, haven't, the county's not been served. No, sir, but we have the, I have the filed complaint, and it is a, is a procedural issue, so that will be accomplished. But to that point as well, Mr. Commissioner, and, and as I've said to you over the last nine years with regards to litigation, when the county is sued on particular issues, my advice to you as counsel is, I don't, I, you don't engage on the discussion, you don't speak to the issue. Once we're now engaged in active litigation, we'll handle it, the legal department will move through the case itself. We will, you certainly are at liberty to continue to work on these issues, but the, the essence of the complaint and the action is to have an injunction and stop the county and the city from moving forward and funding the project and the city of actually implementing the park enhancements. So that is the crux of what the complaint is to do. You are all at liberty to move forward. I know the court will look at the legalities of the use of the land and the funds, but in the meantime, you're, you're free to speak to the use, but I would ask you all as, as clients to not actively discuss active litigation on the issue when pressed or asked by your citizen, okay? Thank you, sir.
All right, that's it, Mr. Nutter.
I had one other thing, I just wanted to congratulate the three commissioners on your elections, I look forward to working with you, and I wish you the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Yeager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Got a few items I wanted to bring up this morning, I'll be as, as brief as I possibly can. One of the things I wanted to bring up, I've given each of you a copy of this, it's a request from a group out of Gainesville. They have actually adopted 200 children in Gulf County, and they want to use our Honeyville Community Center to have a little party for, for those children and to give them presents out and that type thing. They're asking for a waiver of the fee for the community center, and I would just wanted to present that to you, we didn't have time to get it into consent, so I wanted to present that to you first, to get your approval for waiver. So move on the waiver.
Motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Rogers, any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this, on this waiver? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Okay, thank you for that. The, the second item, as you recall, we got board's approval, y'all's approval to apply for Triumph, do a pre-application to Triumph for some loss of, of tax revenue. We actually did that, kind of a joint application with not only us, but also the school board and also the city of Port St. Joe. I've had active discussions with the Triumph staff, with them getting information. One of the things that I've also talked about with Eastern Shipbuilding is the application that we have in for the floating dry dock in discussions with them and discussions with Triumph staff. At this time, what I would recommend the board to do was actually draw back that application. My understanding is the Port Authority as a co-applicant has already approved that, to pull back that application themselves. So I think we need to do the same thing, pull that application back. Eastern is in the process of rebuilding from the storm, they're in process of actually negotiating with Triumph on, on their Bay County application and the term sheet. So I think in discussions with everybody, I think it best at this time, just to pull that application back for a time. I need a motion for that.
All right, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel. Second by Commissioner Rich, any further board discussion on pulling back this application? Anyone in the public on this? Come on, come on up to the podiums, just make sure you state your name, Mr. Davis, and your address for the record.
My name is Marvin Davis, 324 Everno Beach, Port St. Joe, Florida, I'm just moving back to the area, South Florida. And my question is, what impact could it might, would it have on the community and the future development and the economy of Gulf County and specifically of Port St. Joe?
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Warren, I think the buildings and the, the work on the fair are going to go forward, that this would not affect that, and so Eastern is, is still coming to the site. And am I correct? Absolutely, we're, we're still working with that $6 million appropriation, we're still going to do the construction of the building and all the improvements to that site, so we can get Eastern Shipbuilding started on that facility. Hopefully by May of next year, that's our goal, May 1st. So it won't hinder anything to do with Eastern Shipbuilding or the jobs that's coming to outfit the Staten Island ferries. What it does do is, is hold back at this particular point in time, the procedure, the procedure of going forward with that floating dry dock. But it is not going to hinder Eastern Shipbuilding from coming to our community and bringing those jobs.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else in the public on this, anyone else? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Next item I have on, on my list is, is, it was a long time coming, but I wanted to inform the board, I've spoken to each one of you individually, I believe, but we received the grant award from Treasury for the beach restoration project, the $2.8 million. We're still negotiating with the contractor, and there'll be some change orders going forward, that's another item on my list, is to get your approval for that. But we've got the approval and the acceptance of that grant award going forward, so just wanted to let you know that. With that, I wanted to say that we've been reached out by the state asking us about the availability of sand, and now they're wanting to participate in the beach restoration project with us. So there's going to be some change orders going forward. We've, the staff and your attorney has been in negotiations about timing of that. So there's going to be two, two items in that change order, probably an increase in the amount of sand and probably a change in the dates, obviously a change in the dates. So with that, what I would ask you for today is approval for the staff and the attorney to continue to move forward with that change order and give the chairman authorization to sign the necessary documents.
All right, thank you, sir.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Rogers, any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this change order? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
My next item is, doesn't necessarily need action, I wanted to inform you that we've received notification from Representatives Dunn's, Congressman Dunn's staff that our 40 acres that were supposed to be pulled out of Cobra actually made it through the vote of, on the House. It's going to the Senate, we believe it'll, it'll get passed, our information is we think it'll get passed before the end of the year. And that will certainly help our argument going forward to remove those entire, entire 900 and something acres out of Cobra, so that's good news, that's something we've been working on for a long time, but I know the, the initial is just 40 acres, but we're confident that the argument we made for the 40 acres will continue on.
Yes, sir. If I could, Mr. Chairman. Warren, that's the first that's ever been pulled out of that, am I correct?
That is absolutely correct, after 10 to 15 to even more years working on that, that's, that's the first.
Great.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I wanted to do is make sure that you had the authority to sign that letter going to Triumph. I, I know the clerk wants to make sure we get approval for all things, and I, I've got the, your approval to proceed with pulling that, that application back, but if, if that could, it can include the chairman's authorization to sign that letter.
Yes, sir.
Going to Triumph, pulling back the application for the dry dock.
I include that in a motion, that we, can we just include that in a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, is that good? Okay.
So move.
All right.
Second.
All right. And motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Rogers, to include this letter in that, in that motion. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
And I've got one more item, I'm about to forget, Mr. Chairman, we actually, in pot three, the 23-county pot of money that's about 290 something million, 12.8's coming to Gulf County. All of that's been approved through the council and probably start spending some money in, in next year. Probably the first of those monies will go to the two cities to do some work on infrastructure, sewer. So we're excited about that. Along with that, as you know, I've been vice chair of that consortium for a number of years. We have elections each year, we'll have elections in January. I have to get the board's authorization for me to continue to work and run on that executive committee. So I'd ask that you approve me running for that executive committee on that consortium.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich, any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? So Yeager, continuing on? Yes, sir, come on up. Yes, sir. And state your name, once again, state your name for your, for the record, please.
Again, Marvin Davis, 324 Everno Beach, Port St. Joe, Florida. Like I said earlier, I'm new back to this area, and I've been working with the Pike and the CDC over in the North Port St. Joe project, and I understand that they have been requesting some Triumph funds. And what is the status of that? Is that can be included in some of that money you guys are spending?
That's a totally different pot of money. Yeah, and I think Triumph staff has already denied the application, however, our money is on pot three, some of the first monies that will be spent, will be spent in the city of Port St. Joe and the city of Weewaw, and one of those, one of those projects is actually in the North Port St. Joe area, but it would have to, it would, it would be involving the sewer and water infrastructure and improving that. So it, it's not the same project as, as what the CDC did, but it certainly includes North Port St. Joe in that project.
Okay, that's primarily for the infrastructure, right?
That is correct.
Okay, that doesn't do with economic development over on that side?
No, sir, it does not.
Okay. Is there anything that the Pike and the CDC, we have, we'll have to do in order to be considered for some of those funds? I'm an expert on this here, you should know Danny and Chester, they have primarily been overseeing most of it, and like I say, I'm new coming to this here by one of the, Mr. Miller, and helping the redevelopment over in North Port St. Joe.
Sure. As you know, as you probably know, there's so many different pots of money that we're drawing from. So some of these pots of money allow for infrastructure, some of them allow for environmental, and some of them are allowed for economic development. All of them require applications and approval of those applications. So I think the, the one application that the CDC has done on economic development through the Triumph, it was denied through Triumph, because I think there was too much on private properties and those type things. Most of these monies cannot be spent on, on private, private property. And that's the issue that the CDC had with that, however, I think the main thing that our board wanted to do is make sure that all the infrastructure that local governments have is, is sufficient that would support economic development in our, in our communities, and I think that's what they're working towards.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Miss State. All right. I don't got a carry, I, I don't got lungs now, I'm born.
There was a, there was a consideration of placing Mr. Yeager on for elections.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, so anyone else in the public? Anyone else in the public on this? All right, any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh. All right, all right, thank you, sir. Someone? Counselor? Mr. Bailey?
Yes, sir, I just want to give a brief report of what's been going on in the building department. Since the storm, we've issued over 200 permits. It's on. We've issued over 200 permits, we're averaging over 100 people in the office daily. We have performed the following inspections in the cities and the Cape and St. Joe Beach area at no cost to the people for permits or inspection fees. We've done 1,276 inspections in the city of St. Joe alone. We've done 1805 in St. Joe Beach, Highland View, Windmark. And we've done 200 so far in Over Street and the Weewaw area. And still on, on today, we're averaging around 20 to 25 every day, adding to that total. And that's just a, like I say, no cost to our people for free inspections for their electrical. So I just wanted to give that brief summary to y'all.
Yes, sir, appreciate that, thank you, sir. All right. Ms. Seig, is anyone? Ms. Leanne? All right, Ms. Hare?
I'm going to go ahead and cover three things altogether, if y'all don't mind. The first two are grant extensions, we're requesting a one-year extension on the scrap grant for Canal Street resurfacing. That would extend it to December 31st of 2019. And for Scott County Road 386 resurfacing, again, extending that for one year to December 31st of 2019. If I could request your approval of this?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I got motion by Commissioner Rich.
Second.
I mean, sorry, Commissioner Rogers. Second by Commissioner McDaniel, any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this extension? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
The other request is actually a request from the Supervisor of Elections Office as they're doing their year-end closeout. They have two grants, which are actually going to extend two years, so they have provided a request for a budget amendment for those unanticipated revenues. And that is for the Albert Sensor Network Monitoring Grant and Election Security Grant that they received under their entity.
So move.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Rogers, any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this, on this grant? All right, any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh. All right, Scott?
Yes, sir, just got one thing, and it's just information. Hopefully in the spring, what I'm going to propose that we do is go back to doing the roadside grass cutting in-house. And so we'll handle it with our people on the county roads, we won't have a contract for that grass cutting coming up in the spring. It's just information for now, and we'll talk further about it at some other juncture, but just so that you know, that's coming when the road roadways are cleared of debris, and we can go back to cutting in the spring, we're going to, I'm going to propose that we do it.
Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Horton? Mr. Joe Paul? Mr. Westwood? All right, Mr. Roberts? All right, Ms. Nollers?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Laney? All right, Chair? Miss anybody? All right, we'll go straight into boy business then. Mr. McDaniel, you want to go first?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have a few items I'd like to address. First of all, in our November meeting, the five of us, the board members, we select our leadership for the upcoming calendar year twenty nineteen. And this is strictly between the five of us members here. At this time, I want to place a motion on the floor. I think it's a very appropriate motion that we ask Commissioner Quinn, her main is the chair for the calendar year twenty nineteen, and Commissioner Rogers to serve as vice chair for the same period. That's my motion.
All right. I've got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? All right, let me just say, I really appreciate the opportunity to continue to represent the, not only the city, the county, not only Port St. Joe, but the entire Gulf County, Weewall, all of it. I really appreciate it. It's been, it's been all and a privilege. It's, it's, it's been, it's been rough at times, you know, as, as the chairman, but I've been, it's, it's, it's been, it's been a humbling experience, you know, but I have definitely enjoyed representing the people. And I really do appreciate the nomination and with God's help, you know, we continue moving forward with this. So thank you. I really appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Ms. Chairman, let me say this. I've occupied the chair and you have a good board here to work with. We have, the people have selected a good board here to move this county forward. We are coming into some hard times next year. This twenty nineteen, we've suffered a terrible disaster in our county and other counties here. And we'll overcome this, but we've got a board that'll work to move forward. And that's what it's going to take with a, but there's going to be tough decisions we'll have to make. We're going to try to, we will make them in the best interest of the people of Gulf County.
Appreciate it. Thanks, sir. Any further board discussion? All right, we got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Rich. Any opposition to that motion that I remain as chair? I will abstain, because I want to vote for myself, so I abstain from the vote. All right, motion passes four and oh. For one extension. All right, you still on the floor, Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir, Mr. Chairman. Quick, quick, I have three things, I'll try to be fast here. Over the holidays, South Gulf Fire Department, and he's not here today, I don't see him, Mr. Mike Barrett, but anyway, he contacted me. As you know, in the county, we have four fire control districts. And he had, South Gulf had received some blankets. And he asked me would the Tupelo Fire Control District, which has four departments, would they like to share? And I said, absolutely. So, South Gulf, Tupelo Fire Control District, thanks you. And Mike, especially, and the people that came up and brought for this generous donation you made, and they've gone through the fire departments and they're spreading them out to the people. So that was a gracious and generous thing to do. Second of all, during the hurricane was coming up, we had some issues. And I want to recognize a young lady and our staff here, but when it came time to the evacuations were sent out, we had some difficulty with a nursing home here. And we had to, we had asked them to evacuate. And the gentleman that owned it, he refused, so we had to take some drastic steps with our county attorney and with the Florida Department of Health here in Gulf County under the direction of Mrs. Sarah Heinz to step in and intervene. And I think the health department director removed over seventy people out of there. Otherwise, we very possibly could have had some tragedies because that building suffered great damage. But it's a shame when someone puts their pocketbook ahead of human life. That's just, that's just unacceptable. I want to thank Ms. Heinz, her staff, and also our county attorney for stepping in and helping enforce the acts of Florida statutes on this.
Yes, sir.
Third, we have with the TDC, this board implemented several years back, a fifth penny. The fifth penny was sunset in December of twenty nineteen. I would like to go ahead to raise any doubts. We've had no problems that I know of. I've talked with the rental agencies of this fifth penny. And I would like to put a motion on the floor with Mr. Chairman that we extend this fifth penny for the TDC for an additional five years, which would run it through, what, twenty twenty-four? That's my motion to extend the fifth penny for an additional five years, beginning in twenty twenty. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is that right, Mr. Chairman? It expires in twenty twenty.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, next year. And Commissioner McDaniel, also, I know Kelly's not here, but she would probably add is that your TDC did meet, I believe, this summer, and they had voted to recommend that in as part of their record amendments. So that was a recommendation of the TDC to you as well.
All right, so that's my motion. Five years extension.
Yes, sir. Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion on this? Go ahead. Ms. Hammond?
Just, so the commissioner, and the motion is to start the public hearing process and to adopt the ordinance which extends it. So it'll start the process and we'll have public hearings on it, sir.
Okay.
It was time to work on it.
All right. Got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh. You still got the floor, Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's all.
All right, Mr. Rogers?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, all right, Mr. Rich?
Yes, sir. Mr. Novak, please inform the public, we received a deed on the Odina boat ramp.
Commissioner, we have Deseret and Calvin Winder, their general counsel, has been working and actually this past week received executed deeds from Salt Lake City for the access and the easement and the actual Odina boat ramp. So we had already voted and the chairman is going to be signing those and then we'll get those recorded and then it'll officially become Gulf County. I just wanted to thank Deseret and their staff. They've been fantastic to work with, but we did receive those. They've been working hard for the last couple of months to get, it's very technical, the access and the legals, but they did get them to us and we now have them in hand. So congratulations.
All right, thank you.
All right, that's it.
That's it.
All right, Macron?
A couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Mark, I know we had some severe damage at Salinas Park. We started, I think we started working on that. Can you give us an update on far as, I know we were filling in that ditch that was cut through and...
Yeah, on the second, on the second entrance of Salinas Park, if you go straight to the beach, there was a substantial cut that had happened during the storm and we've been filling it back up. I think we've got about seventy-five loads or something in it right now. And then we're going to work our way on around. The park is not really accessible for visitors right now in the condition it's in, but we're working toward it. It's going to be a pretty long haul in some of it.
Okay, other thing I had is, so that everyone knows, the contract on the state road as far as pickup is a different contract.
That's correct.
Than the county contract. So everybody knows we, we don't have much control over that. So I know you've been talking to DSR about, of the contractor, but so that everyone knows what, what our hands are kind of tied on as far as the pickup on the state roads.
That's right. Ashbread is the county's contractor picking up county roads and city roads, and DRC is the contractor picking up on the state roads.
Okay, okay, I thought you had one, Chair.
All right, and the chair doesn't have anything. Moving on down item number eight, Ron Hardin, Mr. General Counsel. The counsel, okay, okay. All right, well, down item number nine, quasi judicial.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
Yes, sir.
You all have a packet in front of you provided by the Gulf County Planning Department. The first item on the list is the Jen Massey and Lindsay Carroll, parcel number zero-three-seven-zero-eight-zero-five. There was a PDRB meeting on November nineteenth. It was a public hearing date, and today would be the second before the commission, which is a quasi judicial. Before I go through that and you open the actual public hearing, if there's a consideration of the commission and the public and the applicant to waive the quasi judicial requirements, Mr. Chairman, if you would, please ask that on the record and see if you can entertain a motion to do so.
All right, is anyone here who wishes to speak on this item? If you're here, please step forward. All right. All right, before you speak, does anyone have an issue with us waiving a quasi judicial hearing? Anyone has an issue with us waiving a quasi judicial hearing? All right.
So moved to waive.
No objection. Need a motion, motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Rich, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rogers. All right, any further board discussion? All right, anyone in the public on us waiving this? All right, motion passes five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe Mr. Marsh is here from SCE Engineering on behalf of the applicant. If he can introduce himself to the commission and to the owner for the record, and I believe he'll prevent, present the application.
Okay, sir. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Tyler Marsh, Southeastern Consulting Engineers. And as Mr. Novak mentioned, this is a variance request for Ms. Jenny Massey and Ms. Lindsay D. Carroll to demolish an existing mobile home and build a single-family residential infrastructure. At this time, we would like to request a variance to, on the twenty-foot roadside setback from Nutt Neck Street, which is an unpaid, unimproved road, to reduce that setback to ten feet from the, from the existing twenty-foot roadside setback.
Okay, all right, thanks, sir. All right.
Yes, sir. At the November nineteenth, the PDRB voted unanimously four-oh on section thirty-four, the form in front of you, also presented for your consideration that granting the variance requested would not confer on the applicant any special privilege as denied by these guidelines to other land structures or buildings in the same district. Following that, they then procedurally found four-oh on sections thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and forty. Unless there's any objection, I'll waive, ask that you waive the reading of those. And ultimately, they recommended a vote of four-oh to recommend approving the variance pursuant to the LDRs and your county guidelines. It has been signed by the county's planner, the director of planning department, and also the chairman of your PDRB, and is offered for your consideration, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I entertain a motion on to waive the formal reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on that? Anyone in the public on waiving the formal reading? All right, any opposition to that motion? Motion to waive passes five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, the second motion for your consideration would be to accept the PDRB's recommendations citing subsection four of section thirty-four as the requirement and procedure for granting a variance, and then also finding that the procedural steps have been met on page two of the form in front of you. They all voted unanimously to recommend those, and I'd offer them to you for your consideration as well.
All right, thanks, sir. So wishes of the board on this variance request.
So moved, except, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Mr. Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any further board discussion on, on this? Anyone in the public on this? All right, any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second item on the PDRB is from the actual planner, and he has, he'd like to address it with you, the recommendations from your PDRB, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
At the last PDRB meeting, there was some discussion back and forth on variance cost, the cost of what it costs the county to publish the variances and the ones we have so far. The PDRB actually recommended to the B O C C by a vote of four-oh to increase the cost related to the variances. The application cost will be twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And the after fact variance, which is the fine fee and the legal and the publications to ten thousand. That's the ones that bill that come in and get their permits and then decide that they want to extend outside. And the conception is that for the variance cost initially, they can get what they want to get by not following the rules, and this will be a deterrent to prohibit some of that.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, if you accept the planning board's recommendations and the planner, then we go through the public hearing and the ordinance processor.
All right, what are your wishes?
So moved, except, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we accept, and so we're right on start moving forward then. Okay, all right, got a motion by Commissioner Rogers. Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? PDRB recommendations. Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh, sir.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, Ms. Lian, public comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Cantu and his representative still here? Steve, are you here?
Uh, yeah.
Did you want to come before the board?
Uh, I just, they, they had to leave, so I guess we'll just make it for another day.
Well, now's your time, if you would like to.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
When you get, Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to, when you get through, please sign this form. Come on up, Steve. All it is, is just a record for showing in our minutes that you came before the board. Go ahead.
I should, yeah, state your name and your address, yeah.
You didn't even fill it out.
My name's Steve Cantu, and I live on three-eight-six, forty-five-eight-four.
Go ahead, sir. You go ahead.
Well, all I'm here for today, I wasn't supposed to be up here actually. The other two were supposed to be here, but they had to leave. But I noticed that a lot of cleanup hadn't been done yet on the roads. And we are cleaning Mexico Beach right now, Kaiser Kane. And they offered to help in any way if you needed them. They had a lot of trucks and a good dumping site that's real close by. So if you wanted to try to get it cleaned up pretty quick, these would be the people to do it. I have their cards here if you want them, you know, want to entertain it. So that was basically all I had to say, you know, but...
And that's about the kind of debris?
Yeah.
Take construction in?
Yeah.
Vegetation.
And they were, they've already bitted on this and they were third in line, so they can take and come in at any time, you know, that you need them. I mean, they've already been certified and all, and do have a CD dumping site that is right there at Mexico Beach, close to it anyway, within a couple of miles. So there's a lot of debris. And I know they happen to go a long ways, you know, to dump that, so it's going to be pretty slow.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cantu contacted me and I asked him if he would come today and bring his representatives, but as I explained to him, we're under contract with Ashbread, which I think these, your people that you represent are, was here, they're in competition.
Yes, yes.
And it's up to Ashbread if they want a subcontract. But I was telling Mr. Cantu here, it looks like the state, I had the opportunity there, my wife and I rode this area, and I see the same debris in Highland View today that I saw probably a month ago. And the state seemed like they're just dragging their feet on cleaning up the state highways, which now that's not, that doesn't fall under the county. We're responsible, Ashbread is responsible for the county and the two-city municipalities. And let me clarify something, I'll get back. I get, I get calls every day, people. I mean, I, I get them every day. And will they pick up this and leave that pile, they pick here and they leave that? Well, a lot of it's mixed and they can't pick up the mix. They got to go back and separate the mix. You know, if it's strictly limbs, they can get that, but if you've got a refrigerator thrown in the middle of the limb pile, then the refrigerator's got to come out, the freon has got to be reclaimed, and just so many of these environmental procedures have to follow. But the state needs some help. And Steve, that may be, you can get what our county... And Steve, that may be, you can get with our county administrator here, later on, or get there and see. They were, who they got? Metrics and...
DRC is the problem.
DRC. But it seems like the state's the ones that really need some help on this. Yeah, 98, when you leave, cross that, the bridge out here, all the way to the Bay County line, it's just, don't seem like anything being moved.
Well, we have about 100 trucks there.
100 trucks.
Ready, you know.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
But anyway, Mr. Hammond, you can work with him, right? Yes, Mike and Hammond.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
All right. Appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. All right, Ms. Linnear?
They fill out that paper over there with Mr. Lemire, right? That's her sitting right over there.
Mr. Chairman, I have Tamim Chaudhary with U.S. Business Administration.
Good morning. Good morning, gentlemen. Tamim Chaudhary, U.S. Small Business Administration, Washington, DC. I believe I've spoken to most of you regarding the disaster assistance that SBA is providing right here in your county, and this is just an overview, a recap, and just an update on what we're doing. As you remember, our focus, 80 to 90% of our focus after disasters is for the homeowners and renters. We are referred, we ask them all to basically register with FEMA. FEMA refers them to SBA. Homeowners may receive up to $200,000. This is a low interest, long-term loan. The interest rate may be as low as 2%. Homeowners and renters may both receive $40,000 for personal property damages, and basically these loans are for that uninsured or underinsured loss. So if the grant money that you may receive from FEMA, if the insurance settlement, if that's not enough, this is to make you whole again. We ask everyone to just consider it. If the loan is denied by SBA, it goes back to FEMA. FEMA looks at their other needs assistance funds to see if, okay, applicant one didn't get the loan application, so loan fees, so let's see if we can help them with our other needs assistance. It really goes to their benefits. No cost whatsoever to apply for the loan. Homeowners and rent businesses and nonprofits can come straight into us. They don't need a FEMA referral. They may receive up to $2 million. Business, the interest rate may be as low as 3.675%. For nonprofits, it may be as low as 2.5%. These loans can go from seven to 30 years, so it's a good amount of time to repay the loan. As far as the update goes, gentlemen, as of November 23rd, Gulf County residents have received loan approvals, 461 loan approvals worth $28.5 million. These include 430 homes, 27 businesses, and four economic injury loans. And by economic injury loans, I mean that the business is perfectly fine, no damage, but no one's coming in because of Hurricane Michael. So this loan is kind of to get you through this recovery period, get you to working capital. As you all know, we've got two disaster recovery centers, and the SBA just at both recovery centers combined, we've received 260 visitors. There's one right here at Memorial, Memorial Library of Port St. Joe, and the other at Weewee Hista Branch Library. Numbers are growing, but the message I really want to give is that FEMA has referred more than 5,400 people to SBA, but thus far, we've received less than 1,250 loan applications. This means like a majority of homeowners and business owners are not really taking the time to fill in these applications. So I'd like to say, if you know anybody, please ask them to fill this in. You can do this online. You can just call the 1-800-659-2955 number, have one mail to you, and I've given the numbers to all of you over there. Or just the best procedures just to come into one of our centers. I mean, we can offer you that customized assistance, get these numbers up, because the deadline currently, it stands on December 10th for physical damages. For economic injuries, it stands on July 11th. So we want them to fill these loans out before the deadline passes, because after the deadline's gone, unless there's an extension, that's it. Our disaster recovery centers, they're open currently Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sundays from noon to 5:00 p.m. So I'd ask anyone to please come on in, and I wish everyone a successful recovery. Be happy to answer any questions that you gentlemen may have.
All right. Any questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Joe Paul got a question.
Mr. Chairman, Joe Paul, Veteran Service. Sir, I do want to, when you said the interest rates were so low and everything, I've got several veterans, a couple did apply, and the word's out in the veteran community, not to waste your time, because it's so FICO-driven that people cannot qualify because they have a credit score too low.
Would you explain that?
FICO, their credit score.
It's too low, so they don't apply?
They've been, two of them have been denied because their FICO score was right at 600, 610. And the word's out in the community now, don't waste your time going unless you've got a really good credit score. And these people are devastated. They need help regardless of their credit score. If they have the ability to repay, they should be considered.
Of course. I can answer?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks for the question. Basically, you are right, sir, that it is a loan. So if you're not able to repay it back, definitely there's going to be that criteria that can Mr. Smith or Mr. so-and-so pay it back. But here's the thing. I mean, if you're not, if these are homeowners and renters, my sir, their case gets referred back to FEMA, you know, and FEMA looks at their other needs assistance funds. Say, Mr. Smith didn't get that loan, because as you understand, it is a loan. We do look at to see if you can pay it back. And FEMA says, okay, Mr. Smith didn't get that application, the loan, so let me see if I can help them with other needs assistance. So this is just a chance for you to get more of the taxpayer dollars that can rightfully go back to you. I would ask, I mean, because otherwise, you're kind of blocking yourself. Say, you don't even bother, but eh, I don't even need this. But that loan denial could get you more money, federal assistance. So that's what I have to say about that.
I wasn't told that until I heard you say it now. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
We appreciate it. Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Linnear?
Ms. Lisa Delaney in reference to emergency services.
Hi, good morning, and congratulations to you. I'm going to talk about something that's completely different we haven't talked about today, but health and safety. The issue is related to ambulances and the fact, we talked about this in the emergency meeting a couple of weeks ago. I have a number of friends who work at the hospital. It's a fabulous hospital, but folks are being kept in the hospital here because we can't transport them other places. I'm not a nurse, but I know them. And apparently, some of the arrangements that we have with other agencies are ending. So we've got an issue here for health and safety in the county. Folks, I mean, I have a good friend who has double pneumonia. It took her three days to get moved out because there were no people to do it. She's now in Destin. But we've also got snowbirds coming in, and lots of them are coming because they want to help us, and lots of them are older folks who might need services. So I just want to know, who do we talk to? How do we get, you know, raise the flag? We still have a huge issue here. It's not of our own doing. It's because Panama City is, of course, in much worse straits. So what do we do? So I was just thinking, who do we need to go to? Because the folks at the hospital are up to here, they don't have time, they're just cycling. So, you know.
All right. Mr. Williams?
You've talked about the five-hour, and you know, that's an issue in your budget, but it's not just that. It's, you know, what to do.
Well, our biggest problem is vehicles.
Yeah.
We made several, we make several trips to Destin, Tallahassee, and I'd say about a third of these trips, we're breaking down on the way. So our new trucks are having issues right now with the DEP, DEF systems. The county is still, maintenance is still trying to work those out. Our dealership at Chevrolet Place in Panama City is out of commission right now. Only other resorts to get to Tallahassee are Dothan with them. We have other ambulances like in Weewee that's 2003s, 2007s, and we're just getting by best we can with the local traffic we're having to do. We have done the transports out of town whenever other agencies can't do it for them, but it's a problem. And we've talked to the state about it. We've talked to Ms. Sarah, and she can put some light on this too, that it's the hospital's responsibility to get these patients out, and they're supposed to have a contract with a private vendor to do that, so it doesn't really fall under the county's umbrella. You want to add to that?
Yeah, I would say that the Florida Department of Health right now is currently...
Come on, come on up, Ms. Sarah.
Sarah, I am administrator, Florida Department of Health, Gulf and Franklin. I know that the Florida Department of Health right now is currently providing five ambulances to assist with interfacility transfers, but they have reached out to the hospitals to work on some contracted vendor services for ambulances, which is what they need to be doing during emergency situations altogether. So we've been coordinating these efforts with the hospital, with Mr. Houston, and as well as Marshall, and we're continuing to work on that, because we do see it as an ongoing issue. Just so you know, and we'll provide you another update.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
And to be specific, these are non-emergency transfers or what's being classified as non-emergency transfers? Are they emergency transfers?
Yes. Cardiac-related dialysis patients, any procedure that the hospital down here can do.
That's up to the hospital to accommodate their transport, yeah. So.
All right. Anything else? All right, Ms. Linnear?
I'll ask for the attorney's opinion on Ms. Kristy McElroy's request to speak on the safety of wetlands and 10th Street.
Yeah, public speaking policy is, everyone is afforded three minutes, so my counsel advice is with regards to commission, not public. So anybody can speak on it.
Just don't, we don't need to respond to anything.
Commissioners, again, it is only counsel, and it is only my recommendation. Each of you gentlemen are free to discuss and come on anything you wish to.
Kristy McElroy, Woodward Avenue, 1311, Port St. Joe, Florida. The clock's ticking now, and I was saying my name, so it's not going to take me the entire five minutes because I'm speaking for the group, for the complaint people. Okay? All right. Before we entered into this complaint against the 10th Street Sports Complex, we all had individual and group conversations with our elected officials to discuss other options. We attended meetings and gathered facts about our experiences before Hurricane Michael and our concerns over water flow and flooding. We requested on countless times to be part of the committees that had been established by the county. Our experiences in flooding with Hurricane Michael proved changes to the wetland behind Woodward and Marvin Avenue, the piping of any part of the canal ditch between 8th and 16th Street, and increasing elevation in that wetland would be safety issues for all of us in the future storms living near or close to the park area in our neighborhood. Expansion of the footprint for that area would not be a healthy choice. We are exercising our rights under the law to protect our property and our safety from the voted-on proposed sports complex in our neighborhood. Several other folks in Commissioner Quinn's district that do not live near the park have also expressed concerns. We hope and pray that others that live in our community understand we need them to be safe in future storms, and we hope and pray that they need us to also be safe. No recreational facility is more important than the safety and security of human beings and their pets. No parent should have to worry about the safety of their family during unforeseen devastating events. These acts of God are inevitable, should not be compounded by engineering decisions made by man or government. The sky did fall and demonstrated the capabilities of nature. The wetland behind our homes was all that saved us from complete destruction. I hope that no one ever has to experience what we have experienced. And if you drive down Woodward Avenue, what you see are people trying to rebuild their lives in trailers and campers, staying close to their property, trying to make that effort. We also have to remember that Hurricane Michael did not strike during high tide, and we were very fortunate that it was a fast-moving storm. And so depending on when a storm strikes and when the tides are, that's what dictates the flooding. And that wetland was a very valuable wet, very valuable basin for us. I appreciate you all, and congratulations on your swearing in.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Linnear?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would just ask if Dr. Hardman wants to speak again on the matter. Are we all okay? I think so. That's all we have.
I want to thank everybody for coming out to the board meeting.